Anything other than what's on our agenda? Seeing none. We have no minutes for approval this evening, so we'll move on to our hearings. We have three quasi judicial hearings this evening. We have a planned unit development. Mike Fleury and Tom Sickle are requesting approval of the 25 lot planned unit development, 19398 Leland Road. And they are also asking for a water resource hearing for that development, as well as a variance for lighting standards. So before we begin our hearing, we have to read our legal information. So technically, we have three, but all with one application. The staff report has been prepared for these applications and has been made available seven days before tonight's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Otherwise, staff has analyzed their criteria which are contained in the staff report, along with the written comments and input received through the public notification process. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the commission follows is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart over here. Anyone wishing to speak needs to fill out a slip and give it to the planning staff. Letters, reports, or pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they are submitted into the record. For the public record, begin all testimony stating your name and address. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open. However, any party wishing a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence, so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, ORS 197.796 requires us to announce the following. "The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval, the sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court." So.
I guess at this time is when we normally ask for any ex party contacts, our bias or conflict of interest. Anybody visit the site or have contact with either the applicant or somebody who has commented on the proposal?
I visited the site this afternoon for 15 or 20 minutes, but spoke to no one.
I too have been to the site a couple of times today and last Friday.
I was also at the site, I believe, last Friday and met the white cat out there that my friends were with, but it didn't sway my opinion on the review.
Any challenges from the audience? Any seeing none?
A question. She said we had to fill out the form with our names and who we were making comments.
Yes, and the planner, Mr. Conkle, will get a form there out on the table right as you come in, so if you, just a minute. This is to make sure we can notify you of the decision when it occurs.
Okay, so it looks like we're ready to proceed then. Mr. Conkle will be presenting. Are we going to do these one at a time this evening?
We could probably consolidate them if you'd like. I can address everything at once.
Okay, so we're going to begin then with PD 03-02 for the planned unit development.
Thank you, Chairperson Carter and City Commissioners. This is an application brought forward by Mike Fleury of MJF Development. The applicant is requesting a 25 lot planned unit development located at 19398 Leland Road identified as Clackamas County map, 3 south to east, 7D, tax lot 301. As part of this application, the applicant is requesting a lot line adjustment, which will need to be done prior to moving forward with any development of the site. The applicant currently has a narrow flag pole that connects the subject site to Leland Road. He would be performing a lot line adjustment with tax lot 3,000 directly to the north, northwest of the site. This will allow better utilization of that about 12-foot wide flag by the applicant who on tax lot 3,000, who currently has a subdivision in for review with the city. This will also allow in a land swap for the water resource, which is currently on tax lot 3,000, to be incorporated into the PUD, which will offer protection of that resource and incorporate into the open space of the planned unit development. This site did receive a water resource delineation approval, which identified a 15-foot buffer around the stream and a 50-foot buffer around the pond and the wetlands next to the pond. The applicant has reapplied through the water resource process, which will be heard tonight because he's putting a pedestrian path inside that opens, or inside that vegetated corridor, as well as part of the new roadway will be removing some of that vegetated corridor. So he's proposed a mitigation plan and replacement of that buffer. After the lot line, or actually, the site is currently is 5.31 acres. After the lot line adjustment, it'll be approximately 5.15 acres. Directly to the northeast is Haven Estate subdivision and Settlers Point planned unit development. Southwest is Silver Fox, which is owned R6, single family. Silver Fox also borders on the southeast. Northwest of the site is Leland Run, PUD, and the other tax lot 3,000, which we discussed earlier, of which the applicant will be doing a lot line adjustment with should this PUD be approved. The PUD consists of 25 dwelling units, 17 detached units, and eight attached units. Access to the site would be from two existing stubs to the property. The applicant has proposed a pedestrian path through the water resource, which would connect the private street to Smoke Tree Drive to the north of the property. The applicant has also requested a variance to the pedestrian lighting standard to reduce it from the three-foot candle minimum to one-foot candle maximum, .5-foot candle minimum, or a similar standard as recommended by staff. Under the PUD requirement, the applicant's required to provide 80% of the underlying density. The applicant could have 28.3 dwelling units on this site. 80% of that would be 22, so the applicant has requested an appropriate amount of housing units on the site. The applicant has proposed several adjustments to the R8 dimensional standards. We will address that later. Comments were received from a Mr. Smith at 1300 Smoke Tree and a Mr. and Mrs. Calvert at 19441 Provisioner Court. After reviewing this application, it was determined that water and sewer could be made available to the site and could be adequately sized by the applicant as part of the development. The storm detention will be handled in pipes that will be underground, and it will be released to the water resource zone directly to the north northeast of the site through an easement next to Lot 2. Don't see any problems with the proposed detention system by the applicant. As for traffic, the proposal will increase to the incremental increase in traffic in the area. All intersections will operate at levels of service, acceptable levels of service for the present. The applicant will be responsible for paying SDC charges, as well as providing, signing a non-remonstrance agreement as part of the development. One issue was brought up, which I'll show you on the map right now. Our consultants from David Evans and Associates, which does the traffic review, identified Lot 16 as having a site distance issue. So we've imposed a condition that requires a non-access strip along this side of Lot 16, which will force the driveway to be placed on this side. The concern was a backing movement here with a car coming around the corner here, which would potentially lead to a conflict. The fire and police were notified of this application. The fire department submitted comments concerning the private drive right here and that this distance needed either a turnaround or to be sprinkled. The applicant has proposed to sprinkle the housing units, and a turnaround is required by the fire department. The current right-of-way of Maury Drive and Tim's Way are 50 foot. Our current standard is anywhere from 49 to 53 feet. We've indicated the applicant that he can continue the 50-foot right-of-way to be consistent with the existing streetscapes. What that does impact, you still have a 32-foot pavement, which is our standard. It reduces the planter strip by a foot down to 3.5 foot. The private street, as proposed by the applicant, will consist of 28-foot of pavement, which will allow parking on one side, which will be required to be on the side that will not have the driveways, have a seven-foot sidewalk with street trees and tree wells. As part of the mitigation for the attached housing, the applicant has proposed, and I've submitted as Exhibit D, revised conditions of approval, to provide landscaping wherever there is not a driveway cut to the attached housing lots. So what this will get is landscaping, about an eight-foot landscape buffer with street trees in that as well, so you have street trees on both sides of that private drive. The mid-block crossing, which is identified right here, it is a change in texture. One concern was the squareness of this. This is a minor design issue. The applicant will be required to round that out, as well as provide appropriate signage on either side of that to indicate to vehicles that there is a pedestrian crossing at the mid-block rather than at a corner, which is a little unusual for folks. The applicant has also proposed to provide a connection from the dead end to the existing right-of-way at Smoke Tree Drive. This will be in the form of a seven-foot path with a seven-foot bridge across the water resource through the open space. This is the flag that currently exists. This is tax lot 3,000 right here. This new line will be where the tax lot 301 would now look like after the lot line adjustment. We will be requiring the applicant to connect to the existing sidewalk at the end of Smoke Tree Drive, as well as provide us an access easement should something happen to this subdivision and it not be approved, so that we can guarantee that we do have that accessway through there. Three trees were identified for removal from the site. The applicant will be required to provide replacement trees, as well as have an arborist go out and identify the trees and put up proper fencing around them to protect them during grading of the site. As part of, the applicant has proposed some changes to the R8 setbacks. Staff has found that these are reasonable. They've maintained the 20-foot rear yard setback. They've proposed a 30-foot setback for the attached housing. I've also submitted Exhibit A, which identifies other mitigation the applicant has proposed. That includes a buffering of trees to be approved by staff along the back of the attached housing next to Lot 15, which is attached housing as well, as well as along the backs of Lot 16 through 18 and 23 through 25. There is an existing stand of evergreens that exists in the Silver Fox subdivision right here. So what they're proposing to do is continue that on, on both sides of what's existing there, to provide as another buffer from this subdivision and the one directly southwest of that. Exhibit A also shows where the landscaping would be provided on the attached lots. As part of the mitigation, staff has recommended that the driveway cuts be limited for all the detached housing, as well as the attached housing. That'll minimize the size of the driveway, so that it doesn't take over the streetscape and prevent appropriate placing of street trees along that corridor. The applicant has also proposed maximum 15-foot buffers on either side of the attached housing, so their corner lots will be 15 and zero for the attached house. They've requested seven-foot setback on the side, which is appropriate for an attached house. They've proposed five and nine setbacks, which is also appropriate for that side of the lot, per our current standards and our code. They've proposed to put the maximum setback applicable, the nine-foot setback on this side of Lot 25 to provide some, the maximum buffer that could be provided in that situation. Staff has also recommended some conditions of approval that have been edited, and they're part of Exhibit D, explaining the housing type and minimizing the size of the garage that could be built on these houses. This was done to kind of, to keep the frontage, the facade of the building reasonable compared to the size of the lot that the applicant's proposing as part of this PUD process. Would like to point out, these are renditions of what the conditions might impose. Attached housing goes through site plan and design review. That has not been approved, has not been submitted for. So these are, I'm sorry, the attached housing, this is what could be designed with the conditions as we've written them. We've limited for the attached housing on these lots, 8 through 13, the garage, to 40% of the facade, total facade, unless it's less than 30 feet, which then we give them a maximum 12-foot garage. So that means an eight-foot door, two foot on one side, two foot on the other side. So this is something like this, this could look like. The applicant has also imposed his own conditions as to the size of the buildings. He's provided a minimum livable area size for the detached and the attached housing, which we've incorporated in the conditions, in the revised conditions of approval. These will also be incorporated into the CCNRs. As for the attached housing, or I'm sorry, the detached housing, we've gone with the same, to allow a 12-foot door or two eight-foot doors with a one-foot center in the middle to try and break up the size of a large garage. Windows will be incorporated into all garage doors, as well as a brick, a minimum three-foot tie brick rock type of design around the garage. The applicant has also provided a self-imposed that all siding shall be horizontal on all sides of the buildings. As for the open space, the applicant has provided for open space in this area, which includes play structures, apart, three parking stalls, open space for throwing balls around. He's also proposed two sitting, picnicking areas, as well as a dock over the pond for fishing, viewing, and whatnot. These are more informal gravel paths. Staff recommended inclusion of a path around the back. The applicant is neither here nor there. He included it because staff asked. Our rationale was to include people, give them another opportunity to get from side to side, as well as to utilize the open space. There's two thoughts. You can either keep people completely out of it, of which people are probably going to go in there anyway, or provide them a path to actually utilize it as a walking path. It will keep people from dumping stuff off the back, more eyes on it than there are. I submit that, I will leave that up to the planning commission. Staff has recommended it this time. The applicant has proposed a seven-foot bridge across, and just a seven-foot connection over to Smoke Tree Drive, as we stated earlier. The applicant, through the water resource review, we've already identified the size of the vegetated cover, buffer that's required. What he proposed through the water resource review this time around was where additional vegetated quarter would be placed due to the loss of the, with the sidewalk being put in, as well as the bridge and mitigation plan, which is appropriate, as proposed by the applicant, for scheduling and type of plants and quantity of plants to be placed. As for the lighting variance, the applicant has requested to reduce the lighting standard. Staff supports this. The applicants, there are no street stubs provided to the site other than these two. We could have required a street to be placed across here to connect to Smoke Tree Drive, of which then there would be no pedestrian lighting standards required. They just put a street light in. We felt that protection of the resource, as well as other alternatives for ingress and egress to the subdivision, didn't warrant putting a street across the existing stream there. So the lighting standard is not self-imposed by the applicant, but rather by the city. One concern raised is for the amount of parking to be provided for the attached housing. We have a current subdivision, the PUD, Leland Run, which sits over here, and it comes in and then curves around, and there's a great deal of congestion right at the curve right there. The applicant met with the neighbors. The revised conditions of approval were because he was not able to meet with the neighbors prior to the date of the staff report going out. He did meet with the neighbors. He tried to address their concerns, which we tried to address through revising those conditions of approval.
What does the congestion come, that's on-street parking? Or what?
My, I believe that the congestion is due to on-street parking, but I think that it's parking that's been there in an extreme amount of time, and that it hasn't been dealt with through code enforcement. I don't think it's a design issue. I don't think it's a subdivision issue. I think that it's a, it could be handled through the code enforcement. In response to the neighbors' concerns, the applicant has come up with a design that includes four onsite parking spots per attached house, plus there's a total of 10 to 11 spots on the private drive, which equates to more than five parking spots per attached house. I understand neighbors' concerns. I don't think it's a design issue. I think that we don't want to go too far overboard here. I would recommend that the applicant, he proposed attached housing, which here's the private street, and this is Exhibit B that was handed out. It's in that packet. Here, here's the private street. It would be the attached drive. So this drive is 36 feet deep, so you'd have one in the garage, one in the driveway, potentially two in the driveway. And then he proposed to provide parking off to the side, another parking stall. So there's your four onsite parking spots, plus the on-street parking. Staff doesn't feel that the parking off to the side is necessary. It increases impervious surface. I think that there's going to be adequate parking here between onsite and private street and the public street to be utilized by these folks. These are more empty nester-type homes, starter homes. It's not very likely that it's going to be a family with two kids and three cars. Most likely looking at one to two car homes here. So that would just be one concern that staff brought up, and the applicant has proposed to address the neighbors' concerns by providing adequate parking. We just don't feel it's necessary, the quantity that he's proposing. So I will stop right there and address any questions you may have, and walk you through any conditions of approval that you may have.
Tony, I have a question regarding that raised, you didn't say raised, and I guess that's my question. The mid-street crossing, is that a raised crossing?
No, it's not. It's proposed to be, it's a change in texture, as well as the, the traffic calming bulb will come out, and then a change in texture from the asphalt to the concrete with the signage.
Would there be an issue with a raised, and I don't mean a speed bump raised, I just mean a real obvious raised, two, two inches, inch and a half, two inches, something like that, so people know we're coming up on a pedestrian crossing. I'll tell you my concern. I was over there today, and I saw a lot of kids playing up on, by Beaver Creek, little Beaver Creek area there, and I would be concerned if there's a playground area and kids crossing. I mean, you could pick up some speed going through there, it appears to me, and I would be, I would, it'd be nice to have a raised speed type crossing there.
It's a, it's a form of speed control that we utilize throughout the city, in the form of, type of a speed bump, raised crosswalk.
Yeah, and if it's, if it's long enough, I don't think the fire department would have an issue with it. You know, their concern is the real, the big, heavy ones. I don't know. I think that that's something we might ought to consider. There are a lot of kids in the neighborhood, and maybe not in the attached homes, but as in those detached homes, I think very well could be.
I think another concern that I have regarding this issue is our consultant, David Evans, in Exhibit 6, also suggested that a street light be placed at that point, and we never really picked that up in the conditions of approval. What's your thinking on that? Because at nighttime-
We could provide it. I guess between the necking down and the signage, you know, the streetlights, we could place it right over it, and it might help. You know, the streetlights aren't that bright. You know, they're more of a diffuse light that gets spread out. It could help. I don't see any reason why not to.
Yeah, because I just think at nighttime, if nobody's parking along there, and you're just driving along, and all of a sudden there's a bulb out, sometimes they could be more dangerous than, than helpful. So I think to alert people at nighttime at that point.
What's the standard? Where would those, where would they be placed? Would there be, would there be street lamps on that street?
There would be street lamps on the street. I don't know right now where the placing is.
So 15 feet or 20 feet, or more than that?
Yes.
I mean, we might be able to fit that in, you know, just in the standard. It would be something to consider, how we're laying it out. I think you're right, though, Dan. I think if we're going to have a raised, I think that would do two things. Show people there's a raised speed bump there, and it would also allow kids to cross and know where to cross.
What kind of texture change was being proposed?
Asphalt, concrete.
Textured concrete or smooth concrete?
I don't know that answer.
Are you suggesting that perhaps if it was a textured concrete, that'd be enough?
Possibly, yeah. Something that makes your tires rattle, don't let them go over it.
It's already over at that point.
That's true.
Possibly, too, I think.
Okay, thank you, Tony.
Are we also considering WR 0308 at this time?
Yes.
Yes, we are?
Yeah.
I was looking through the conditions of approval here, and it seemed like the applicant had gone to greater lengths than are reflected in the conditions of approval. I was just wondering if what he presented in his application is in addition to the conditions, or if we need to be careful to capture everything that we want in the conditions?
No, we felt that if the applicant has adequately addressed it, there was no reason for us to condition him to do it. We feel that in his proposal, he's addressed all of the criteria necessary for required information. He's submitted all the information necessary for the type of alternative analysis and whatnot. He's addressed those accurately.
So he would be held to everything that he proposed?
Correct, correct.
In addition to whatever conditions you might add?
Correct, correct.
Should we access for lots 14 and 15? How would they like to access the road?
They're going to actually come right off of Tim's Way, right here. There'll be a joint driveway coming up through the middle. And what we've done on the attached housing is limited, limited the driveway to 24-foot total from the, from the end of the asphalt to the back of the planter strip. And then at that point, they can neck it out if they, if they so choose. On this side, I had to revise the condition of approval because we don't actually have a planter strip on this side. So it will be 24-foot for the eight feet, which represents the landscaping strip, which they proposed as part of their mitigation for the attached housing. As for the detached housing, I'm drawing a blank. It was 16 feet from the road back behind the planter strip, at which point they could either neck it out or keep it 12-foot.
So on 14 and 15, again, that center driveway coming out of there, what is that, what's that distance to the Tim's Way intersection there? Or that'll be, not be intersectionally, actually, well-
On that curve right there?
Yeah, either both sides. To where it, where it comes in.
Right. That's going to be well down here.
That's going to be a through-
There's another lot right here.
Okay.
100-foot deep, 100-foot depth minimum right there.
Okay.
As far as right here, we're probably looking at probably about 40-foot.
Yeah, I'm less concerned about that, because I think you have plenty of visibility.
Yeah, coming around this corner, you should be able to see that in adequate time.
Yeah, I think. Okay, thanks.
And Tony, can you just walk me through, just to clarify, how does the lot line adjustment work again? What did it used to look like, and what, I know this is what it's proposed to be?
What we've got is-
Did it just run straight through?
We've got this little flag right here. This is a flag lot. This is existing that runs out to Leland Road, which is out here. And this is the, it was a square.
Okay.
With the flag going from right there out. So what they've proposed to do is change the slot line to reflect this, and then tax lot 3,000 then incorporates all of the flag from this all the way down to Leland Road, which is an excess of 100 feet.
Okay.
Okay, on the conditions of approval, we talked about, you know, the planter strips and the trees and everything, and I just wanted to make a comment. What is, what's supposed to be the intent of the planter strips besides the trees? Because I'm seeing in the neighborhoods that people are doing a lot of different things with the planter strips. Some people are doing bark dust, some people are doing rocks, some people are doing grass, some people are doing nothing. And so- And so, do we have any kind of standard?
So the applicant can, one, adjust the lot line that they're proposing to do with tax lot three thousand, so that they can get to where the new road is going to come down. Or they can provide a temporary access of which the next person will be responsible to build. Smoke Tree Drive is going to come down and curve this way. Okay, this is Smoke Tree Drive. This is their right-of-way. This is where the back of the sidewalk is. So even if this applicant ran the lot line right up to there, one, we're not exactly sure until we start reviewing the next property of where that right-of-way is going to be, how the street's going to be designed on that corner there, because it is a tight corner. So he would not be able to make that connection up unless he went five foot on this other side, and then you'd only get the sidewalk built and not the planter strip, the curb, the side, and the rest of the street. This applicant would then be building and trying to match to a sidewalk that we've already put in. Our fear is to put the sidewalk in and have them rip it up and then redo it. It's just a waste of resources at that point.
Okay, so what kind of temporary connection would you make that would be suitable?
We... Temporary access ways would be asphalt, put-down asphalt. It's cheap, it's easy to put in. And then the next person would be responsible to update it to city standards.
Any other questions for Mr. Conkle at this point? No?
If I may, real quick. The site map with the buffering, which shows what the applicant is proposed to do, that's Exhibit... Has been entered in the record as Exhibit A. The housing type examples, which you've received, has been entered as Exhibit B. The letter from Mr. Sissel identifying some of the conditions they would wish to impose on themselves has been entered as Exhibit C. The amended conditions of approval, these address conditions twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, and they add conditions twenty-nine and thirty, has been admitted as Exhibit D. And then a letter which the applicant sent to surrounding neighborhood members, residents, has been entered as Exhibit E.
Okay. I have one other question, probably appropriate for you. The letter that we received from Kevin and Marion Smith, can you point out to me where their property is in relationship to this proposed project?
Thirteen zero zero one, Smoke Tree. There is, or whatever it is.
I don't believe that's going to... Tree. I don't know exactly without the address numbers where one-three-zero-zero-one is. I can find that out. Very clear.
All righty. Okay, so that was your...
Correct.
All righty, then, if the applicant would like to come forward.
For the record, my name's Tom Sissel. Address three-seven-five Portland Avenue, and that's Gladstone. And sitting behind me to my right is Mike Flurry, who's the proposed developer and the applicant in this request. Just to make sure you've got some of the stuff we submitted, I hope that this time you've got the large plans. Okay, good.
We love it.
Okay. And then I... Some of the other items, I... Tony just went over with you, so I'll skip a little bit here. And I'll state this early on so that you can keep this in mind, but Mr. Flurry has tried his best to work with staff and try to address neighbors' comments that came out of the meeting that was held last week at the site. But if the planning commission is having some problems with some aspect of this application, we would request that you continue the hearing so that we could address those specific items that you might raise. And the applicant would be willing to offer a continuance to the hundred-and-twenty-day time limit if that became necessary. But we hope to resolve this thing this evening. Just firstly, some goals that in trying to develop this property that were tried to be met was to protect the intermittent stream and the pond that exists on the property, to connect the existing public street stubs that enter the property on two sides, to provide pedestrian connectivity through the site, to provide varied housing, and it's that's compatible and acceptable to some degree, at least, with the neighborhood. And finally, for the developer, this property, the application proposed, or the development proposed, has to be feasible to develop. And I say this only because you may be aware that several years ago Riverside Homes came in to try to develop this parcel and two other parcels along with it. They did get your approval, they did get the planning commission's approval at that time, but then they determined it wasn't feasible to develop, and that application The property owner is... I guess I should say he's... He is asking a good deal of money for this property, which no one denies him his opportunity to ask it for that. He's lived on the property for a good number of years. And there's been, prior to Mr. Flurry, there's a number of people who had talked to me about the potential of developing this property, and I'm sure probably other engineers got similar inquiries. But Mr. Flurry is taking a risk that he can make this thing occur, and we are trying to, through this application, trying to provide something that is... Meets all these goals that I've noted previously. So I'm going to go over here and get out some exhibits here. This is... Set over here. Can you see that from there? Okay. And I'll back up for the audience here. This is the site. This blue outline, the dark green, is the site as it's currently proposed, including the lot line adjustments. The flag strip portion, or flagpole strip portion that we discussed earlier with Mr. Conkle, was a sixteen-and-a-half-foot-wide strip of land that ran... Runs right out there to Leland Road, right adjacent to the Haven Estates development. In exchange for that sixteen-and-a-half-foot strip, Mr. Flurry is picking up some additional area here and in here that will be for green space area. It's not any area that's being used for lot development. As you can see, this property is developed... This is Leland Run, the original Leland Run. This over here and around to this side is Silver Fox subdivision. This is Sellers Point subdivision, and then Haven Estates is in this area here. As you'll note, Sellers Point and Leland Run One were... Have both open space areas. They were both developed as platoon developments. Sellers Point was probably done... Probably constructed in nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand or so. Haven Estates, the first phases were constructed about the same timeframe, and some later phases more recently. Silver Fox was constructed about two years ago, and Leland Run One was also developed in that rough timeframe. So this is... I kind of have an infill now with what's developed around it. This parcel over here, we're showing some dashlines, this is a proposed Aiden's Glen. It's a subdivision that's in the city currently for approval, but there's been no decision on it. The lots we show there are based upon the application that was made on that subdivision that we were able to obtain from the applicant's consultant. So this is kind of trying to show what this whole neighborhood would look like with this proposed PUD, with this subdivision. And down here is Wesley... The Wesley Lynn Park site that the city now owns. It goes all the way out to here, and it's to be developed, I understand, perhaps next year or the year after. Well, let me get my notes here. The thought of where to place the attached units that were required as part of a PUD application was a subject of debate, as a debate with the applicant, the staff, and the neighbors have been put into it as well. So I will try to explain how we came up with the location. There's eight attached units. They're all proposed in this area here. Six of them are about thirty-one feet wide and will access off this private drive. Two are right here. They're wider and not quite as deep. They will have access off Tim's Way. In this area here of the open space area, there's the active open space. And this is Sheet L1 of the plans that you would have received. And again, here's those lots here, and the two that face Tim's Way. And across the private street from that is proposed a lawn area, kind of a basketball court area, some area with ground for play structures, an area that will have some benches and some additional benches here, and then there'll be kind of a walking path around it and also connecting out to the private drive and this public pedestrian walkway. Even though it's a private street, it will have a public walkway along it and crossing the drainage way. This location was picked because while the attached units may not have that many children, and if they do have children, it may be very small children. And so that would put the play area directly across the street from them. The other thing was it provides a better level of safety in terms of that it's on the private street, which will have less access than a location along the public street. So if a child were to escape parental control for a moment or two and run out in the street, there's far less chance of some sort of accident there than it would be perhaps on the public roadway. And so while this is not meant to be exclusively for the attached dwelling units, it was also intended to be used for those children that might be in the detached units. And there's nothing that's going to prevent other neighborhood children from outside the subdivision from using this area. But that was how the rationale came up for that. In regards to the buffers, this raises an issue then, because the neighbors in the surrounding neighborhood, and particularly the four who live in lots in Silver Fox that back up to that attached units, which, whether it's be correct or not, there's a conceivable opinion out there that attached units are lower income and may be somewhat of a neighborhood problem. We don't agree with that view, but we have tried to address neighbors' concerns. And I'll bring this up here. This is kind of a little bit of enlargement of this area. Again, here's our subdivision boundaries, and these are the attached unit areas here. What Mr. Flurry has proposed is along this boundary is to put a fence, a wood fence, that will be six feet above the backyards of the homes on Silver Fox. And I think at least three of the four lots on Silver Fox have had short retaining walls built to level their backyards. And they're approximately two to three, or three-and-a-half feet tall. His idea is to build a fence that would be six feet above their yard area. So in the back of these homes, these future home sites, these attached units, the fence would be approaching, it would be eight to nine-and-a-half feet tall. But thus, it will be obscured as a dense evergreen vegetative buffer is proposed. Now, the exact elements of that buffer is going to be part of the design review decision, but it's meant to be site obscuring both... For both ways. As the trees would grow, they would grow up and obscure the attached homes from those homes in Silver Fox, while their fence provides some immediate relief, and it would also obscure them looking at that direction. In addition, the buffer setback, code in all those single-family dwelling zones calls for a twenty-foot setback. Mr. Flurry has proposed to have a minimum of thirty-foot setback, and probably with the homes that may be constructed there, that may be more like thirty-four, thirty-six feet. In addition, in a front, as Mr. Conkle discussed earlier, there's some green area, and Mr. Flurry has proposed... I'll bring this up temporarily. He's proposed a driveway that would come in with a parking stall here to get the three outside, plus the one in the garage. And in this area here, adjacent to the roadway, this would be another permanent buffer, or I want to use specifically, a perpetual protected landscape area. In other words, it means that they have to maintain it in green and how to be set up so that it has to be a certain vegetative... Mr. Flurry's thinking trees and shrubbery to provide a visual green from the... Between the street and the homes, except where the driveways cut through. Again, the exact elements of that will be part of the design review. Finally, Mr. Flurry, there's this ever... Firs here that already exist along the rear of several of the Silver Fox lots that back up to the proposed detached dwelling areas. But it doesn't extend all the way across this block here. So where it's been noted in yellow is the areas that are currently lacking. Mr. Flurry will plant additional trees, evergreen trees, in these areas to provide eventually the same kind of buffer of green buffer between the homes that back up each other in the two blocks as is proposed. in the two blocks as is proposed. There is, you have this letter dated September twenty-second that I wrote here, and there's some specific things that Mr. Fleury is addressing that came out of the neighborhood meeting the other night. And I'll kind of go through these, because while you have them, those here in the audience don't have a copy of it. And I'll just kind of go through it briefly. In response to the size and value of the homes, Mr. Fleury is proposing that the detached homes have a minimum living area of fourteen hundred ten square feet, and that the attached have a minimum living area of thirteen hundred square feet. Mr. Fleury feels that for the attached units, that you're probably looking at a home value or homes that would sell in the hundred and sixty thousand dollar range. That'd be the attached. The detached would be somewhat more than that. In response to the homes, and Mr. Conkle has touched on some of this, horizontal siding is proposed around all the homes on all these sides, and a brick or stone garage fronts up to a minimum thirty-six high, thirty-six inches high is going to be required through the subdivision's CCNRs. I just spoke about this perpetual protected landscape areas. That would be these areas in yellows here, and about the fence. And finally, Mr. Conkle spoke about it, and I'll just briefly mention here about the three onsite parking stalls plus the garage. So there could be up to four parking stalls for each lot. Now, I was a little bit surprised here that Mr. Conkle thought that they might not allow this one additional sideways one, but we would like to have it. We, Mr. Fleury, will request it. But again, this may be a feature, something that comes out of the design review unless some sort of decision is made pending that this evening. I'm going to briefly go through a couple of more things. I'm going to pass out a couple of more exhibits here.
So I guess this is going to be exhibit E?
Yeah.
This will be exhibit F.
Thank you. The first plan I gave you, I guess exhibit, shows what a typical attached unit may look like, colorized. This shows the green in areas. This white area in the center, this being the common property line. This white area would be the footprint of the dwelling unit. This would be the rear yard. This shows it being thirty to thirty-four feet deep. This shows a six-foot wood fence, or excuse me, nine-foot wood fence with the evergreen plantings back here. A six-foot fence will run along the opposite side of the opposite side property line away from the common side. That would be a six-foot fence behind the two units along their common line. There'd be a green area here between the living unit and this proposed sideways parking stall. And this eight-foot area here in front, that I probably should have colorized that for you, that would be a protected landscape area. So this gives you a sense of how the lot, or how the living unit would fit on the lot. And again, the living unit and its architecture and the exact floor plan, everything is not been determined will be a function of design review, at least the architecture portion of it. But this is to give you a sense of what it might look like.
Mr. Cecil?
Yes?
Is the length of the driveway long enough to park two cars? Or would it just be one in the garage, one in the driveway, and one in the space over here?
Okay, what's proposed, this is thirty-six feet is proposed from the curb to the face of the garage. And that is, would be an average of eighteen feet for each vehicle, so that will handle most vehicles. So you could park too deep of most vehicles. And then this, this space here would be nineteen feet, thirty-one minus the twelve-foot driveway, so this would be a nineteen-foot deep space destruction. So you could probably find some longer vehicles than that's out there, but there aren't that many, especially probably not in people that would be purchasing these type of housing, these type of homes. And then Mr. Conkle brought up the question, or about the number of onsite or on the street, private street parking spots. And we have shown here what we see as the possible onsite parking. There's six spaces here that, excuse me, five spaces here that could be across from the driveways of the attached units. There's three spaces right in this area that are, will be on the backside of the sidewalk that will provide head-in parking. And then three additional spaces here along fourteen that would be opposite and opposite lot of sevens driveway. And then there would be a twenty-foot separation there between the two parkings on opposite sides of the private street to allow fire and emergency vehicles to go through. And these spaces are shown to the city standard of twenty-three foot length. That's a little longer than most jurisdictions I see, but you know, it still works. Actually, we have a little room to separate it a little bit more if we needed to. So that, that works. All right. And you've probably have reviewed these drawings, but, and the water resources aspect was done by Mr. Jay Lorenz. He's not here this evening, but he was here for the original water resources that was heard, I'm thinking December or January, I can't remember right now. And he, along with Kathleen Bachman of Gretchen Badney's Landscape Architecture, came up with this planning scheme for the, along the intermittent stream and the open, and the area around the pond, the buffer area around the pond. One aspect you might wonder about is this, this little area next to lot two, where it notes out to be grass creeds. That was something that the, that is where the outfall for the storm drain line will be going. The city wanted to have an access back there. There's currently an open space area that apparently had lacked access, and this is, and it's got some sanitary sewer as well back there, and this is their access point to get back there. That's all I'll say about that.
Okay, so that would go from the road all the way back. I was going to ask you about the two little corners in that open space area next to lot, the two, I think, and three on the other side.
Right.
And you couldn't really tell exactly what those little corners were going to do.
Are you referring to this corner and this corner over here?
Towards the road.
Okay, up here and here? Yeah, that'll all be green area, and it'll be, this'll be area that'll be planted. There will be, behind the sidewalk, there'll be the public utility easement that's required. And in this area, this will be a grass creeped surface, so it'll look like, it'll look like a lawn effect, but it'll be drivable for maintenance vehicles. But the rest of it, there's a lot of plants in there. That's not all trees, that's a mixture of shrubs and trees, but it's, and there's, in this area right here, between the pond and the street, there's, when this pond was excavated a number of years ago, or decades ago, what was pulled out of the pond was piled right there, and is now several feet high and has some trees of some size starting to grow on it. But that would be left, and that would create a kind of a visual barrier between the pond and the street that's already there. But the, from the street, except perhaps on this end. Conditions within the fifty-foot buffer, and basically, we need to leave it alone.
Okay.
Okay.
So you mentioned that the stream was intermittent. Is it basically dry in the summertime, or does it not at all?
It's, I think it dries up, I'm trying to think this year, because I was out there in May, and it seemed to me like it was, seemed to me like it was pretty dry by May. Maybe it was June, I can't remember for sure now. But even, even in the winter, it's, you're able to basically take a short hop across it. It's not, the fifteen-foot buffer is not measured from the center of that stream or even from its normal top of bank, with that, for the city's code, and this came out of your original water resources decision, it's measured from the edge of a two-year storm event. So that's what's taken. That'll be, there's an existing driveway that comes up this flagpole up here, or excuse me, this driveway, currently this house that's on this property comes down this gravel driveway to get access and crosses that stream, and it has a couple of culverts. And there's another little covert here, and I'm not sure what that was, therefore, it might have been another access originally for the Silver Fox parcel. Those will all be removed, and those will be done if with, through DSL, if a DSL permit is needed. The amount of removal, the material to be removed may fall under their permitting requirements, but that'll be something Mr. Lorenz will work with. And in replace of those culverts, there'll be this bridge structure, which there's a few samples, some color totals were put into your plans to show what that would look like to kind of span over that. That would be a seven-foot wide bridge, right, divided pedestrian connection. When you look at this overall neighborhood plan, you see that from someone from Haven Estates, perhaps who wanted to go through Wesley Lynn Park and then want to drive there, would have, without this development, would have to walk all the way up to Leland Road and come around, or have to walk down the parkway and come around this way. This connection, and I'm assuming this connection is, but even with that temporary easement that Mr. Conkle spoke about, this would provide a connection that would basically cut in half the walking distance required. There's a walkway here for Leland Run One, and then I heard from the neighbors, and we met with them the other night, that this drive, or this walkway here was just recently constructed within the last two to three weeks, it sounds like. So anyway, that would provide a walking connectivity from this area on this side of this drainage way to Wesley Lynn Park's other, other south side neighborhood. In terms of the conditions, I actually have a copy of the most recent revised conditions, but I spoke with Mr. Conkle earlier today, and the applicant is satisfied with the decisions that have been proposed. In regards to the issue about traffic conco that you brought up, Mr. Powell, in terms of having a raised walkway, we have no objections to it. I don't know if you've recently- Driven down Glen Oak Road since that reopened, and they have two traffic calming features. They have the little island in the middle, which is supposed to, I guess, slow you down as you go around.
I don't know what that's supposed to be.
And then a little further-
Traffic calming.
And a little further on, there's actual speed bump, and the speed bump is very effective, and the island, I don't feel is, but-
I would tend to agree with that.
Hence, I bring it up.
And so, but at the time, we were, this was being discussed with staff, it's a raised speed bump type, whether it be a raised walk or an actual speed bump, we were told was not going to be permitted, even though there are examples in the city already of that. So we have no objections, if you wish to-
Okay, but I have a comment here. Okay, so this is from experience of the new speed bump that is asphalt, that is raised, that is the same as the road, although it does have the little, the little lines that lead up to it. I think it would be much more effective to have a stamped concrete that's visually different, because the asphalt raise, you just don't see it.
Well, and the actual crosswalk itself will be concrete, and it could be, it could be textured. I mean, and I'm saying this not knowing exactly what the city's willing to allow or approve, but it could be textured concrete, or it could be colorized concrete. But those are all possible to do, and to raise it, you know, two inches or six inches, that is possible to do. What I'm envisioning, if it's, the walkway itself would be concrete, and the ramps kind of leading up to it on either end would probably be asphalt, and maybe have some, some striping that you have in front of speed bumps to alert you to that. But, and you know, this would be probably an issue that the public work section would be very interested in, because they ultimately have to maintain it. In commercial centers, you'll often also see these little raised bumps right at the edge of the walkway as well. I don't suspect the public work section really wants to see those, because that could become a maintenance item, but you know, colorized or textured concrete surfaces for the walkways we've done in other jurisdictions. And as far as I'm aware, they're not a maintenance issue, but then I don't maintain those things. In regards to the streetlight spacing, typically, streetlight spacing is about a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet between streetlights, two to three lots generally. And so I don't know exactly where the last streetlight is on Maury Drive, but that would be done in conjunction with PGE and their lighting people. But I would agree, it makes some sense to put a light over a sidewalk, and usually you do have lights at intersections where you have sidewalks as well. So we could see if that could be arranged. In regards to the, since we're talking about lighting, in regards to the pathway lighting, the variance request that's part of the application is, wasn't, I guess, was, I would say, was not the applicant's idea. My understanding is where this whole variance request for a streetlight came from was the fact that Clackamas Community College, in putting a pathway around their campus, who has streetlighting experts working with them, felt that the three-foot candles that's proposed, or as part of the code, was too bright, and they worked with community college to come to a better standard. And basically, we're trying to follow, at staff's recommendation, to follow that standard. I could not tell you how bright three-foot candles is. I'm not an expert in streetlight, or in lighting, so I will take it from staff's comments to us and their suggestions that it's, the three-foot candles is probably too bright for a pedestrian way, and that's why we've requested that variance request. My understanding is, is that the code revisions that are in the process of being worked on this, that will be changing to what's being requested here. And I think that's all I have of that point.
The trail behind three through seven.
Okay, I'm sorry, one, one more item here. On your plans, we have, I'll just do this colorized thing here, but we have on this sheet one of our overall plans, we show this, what we call is an optional woodship trail that runs behind lots three through seven. Mr. Fleury was kind of noncommittal, as Tony Conkle spoke about this wood trail, woodship trail originally. trail originally, simply because it puts it behind these lots. At the neighborhood meeting, there was people, especially a few that lived across the way, didn't like the idea of that trail there as well. Mr. Fleury, while he has, can go either way on it, I think his preference, if he had any preference, and that of the neighbors, as we heard from the other night, would be that they'd prefer not to have that woodchip trail. And, and I, some of those neighbors may be here this evening, and may wish to speak further about that. But I just wish the, the planning commission to be aware that that's, that's Mr. Fleury's opinion on that woodchip trail, and we...
Okay. So how wide is that area from the back of those housing lots to the edge of the overall property? How wide of a green space are you talking about?
Okay, there's a, the minimum width at any one single point is 20.3 feet, from the back of this Havens Estate subdivision to the closest point on a proposed lot. It's, most of it's slightly wider than that. The, the trail has to be within the five feet of the 15-foot buffer that's furthest away from the resource. So it has to be in the five feet closest to the rear of those lots. So what's being proposed is a three-foot woodchip trail within the five feet closest to lots three through seven.
All right, and are you envisioning that those properties would be fenced back there?
I think if there's a trail back there, I think it's very likely they'd be fenced.
Most people do fence their backyards.
Yeah, I would say...
That would be their backyard.
That would be their backyard, yes.
Okay. And what are you envisioning and doing in that area, aside from the possibility of a woodchip trail?
Okay, well, there's just, the landscape architect's plan shows this trail as well. As you can see, there's a bunch of vegetation, trees and shrubs, and there's already some existing willows in this area as well, that would just increase the vegetation in that area. There's some, there's some vegetation over that stream corridor now, but it's, it's non-native, and would be largely removed and native vegetation planted. But it would simply bring the vegetation out and to the, to the property line. I mean, if you didn't require the woodchip trail, that would just become more vegetated area.
Okay, but if you didn't, if you didn't put in a formal trail, you still would be able to walk through the area?
Yes, you would, yes.
And so the ground cover on the area would be dirt, or, you know, compost?
Well, I think it'll be, the landscape architect, I think his intent is that it'll be native ground cover, for instance...
Blackberries?
Well, not Himalayan blackberries.
Drowned everything off.
Actually, I, I think that she spoke about, yeah, Oregon grapes, and things like that. So, that would be the intent. So you could walk on it, but it wouldn't be a formal trail.
Is it, is it providing the necessary connection, both the wetlands to the street?
There's a, from, here's again the pond, and here's the stream corridor. There, this trail here, up to this point, we have a little sitting bench that's still proposed. We're not, we're not asking for that to go away, nor are we asking for this trail and the fishing dock area to go away, presuming you wish to have a fishing dock. But, instead of this connection from here to the active open space area along the rear of those lots, they would simply have to walk back out to the public walkway and in this direction. So, it's, you know, going around one side of those lots versus going the other.
But my take on that area is that if you can pass through there, people will pass through. It sounds like a great place for dogs to be able to go do their thing, and it doesn't seem like it needs to be a formal area, as long as they can, as long as they have access to it.
Well, I would agree. I mean, the vegetation won't be so dense that you can't walk through it. I mean, there's always going to be kids and swashbuckers would walk through it. I mean, I, I went through much worse when I was growing up, so...
As lo, as long as it's not a mud pile, it seems fine.
Yes. And that would be...
Personally.
I believe that we're in agreement.
Good.
And that's all I have, unless you have any further questions.
Any more questions for the applicant?
I do have a question. Tom, find out which one this is on. Tony mentioned that there were potentially, we talked about extending that private street to cross over and meet...
Smoke Tree Place.
Okay.
That would be, there's Smoke Tree Place here, in this pathway...
That's it, that's it, right.
Yeah. This pathway ends right here, and Smoke Tree Right-of-Way ends right there, right now. Currently, the 16 and a half foot pole strip goes right past it. And what the consultant for the, for the neighboring developer has requested that they be given back to a line such as this, to put their, their street system in, as they're envisioning it. So I would leave a gap from this, into this sidewalk area, to the end of what Mr. Fleury could construct as part of this PUD application, because of this proposed lot line adjustment. I think with Tony, and he's had discussions with Mr. Fleury and I in the last few days, what the city would like to see is an easement, to be sure that that connection is made if this development fails. If it goes through, then it's not an issue, but he wants to be sure there's a connection, it doesn't, you know, it's not separated by 10 feet of no man's land.
Right. And my, my question is, if, if, if we were to extend the private street across, that would cross the stream, would it not?
This street here?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, it's going right up, basically, we're taking it right up to the buffer's edge currently.
Okay, so I, I just didn't see that, clear to me.
Yeah.
I mean, crossing the street. I like the, I like that view you've got there, that's very helpful for us, well, at least for me, to be able to see the whole neighborhood, because it really helps me understand how that traffic could be impacted or not through that process. And I'm, I'm a little concerned about, well, I'm not that concerned, about your area there, because it appears that if we continue that road out through the, another development, we should be okay. Yeah, that one out...
Okay.
To Leland. We shouldn't get landlocked in there, and that's, that's my only, that would be my only concern.
Okay, and I think this is, Tony would have to tell you where that one is. I mean, that's, that's, I know the application's in the door at the city, but I don't know the exact status. And, you know, if this application come in a few years ago, before some of your more recent code updates, I think in all likelihood, we would have been required to provide a street connection between these two streets here, which is now not desirable. But the pedestrian connection, I think, would do a lot to serve what...
I agree.
Yeah, and there's enough street connectivity in that area. We have lots of areas that don't have it, there just seems to be one area that does have it.
But that, that picture of it is great, because we can see that. And then a lot, most of the time, we don't get, we only get to see this little piece, and you have to try and envision what, what it looks like outside that little piece. And this does a good job of doing that for us. So I, I just wanted you to know, you did a great job on that, and I appreciate it.
Well, I, I try to learn some new tricks now and then. Okay, any others?
I have some comments, maybe suggestions for the parking in the little kitty area?
Oh, yes.
Maybe suggest putting in a grass tree to gravel instead of concrete or asphalt? Put a more, more plummy surface?
You know, Tony, can you correct me on this, but I believe that, and also some of the design features in this whole area, I think is part of the design review application. So, I don't think that's, anything is, anything's been determined for sure on that, so...
Suggestion. Also, I noticed you were going to put up a four-foot side梁 fence around the pond?
Yes.
Is that...
That's basically a safety concern. Actually, I was trying to remember, before was the correct height?
Right, around the pond.
Yes.
Is that probably necessary?
Well, it's deep enough, a small jar could probably drown it. That's the idea, bringing it around it.
It's hard to access, I mean, the side梁 fence around it.
Well, yes, I imagine if it gets old enough to be able to get it past the roof. The fishing dock, we're not, you know, we're not... Yes, and, and there's been no accidents yet, so...
Was that something that you or the developer proposed, or something that was required of you by the city?
I don't know for sure that's a city requirement. Mr. Fleury felt that it was important to be there, because there, this will be a track within the subdivision, it'll be maintained by these homeowners, and that's the liability issue. And he felt it was very important that, that fence be around that pond.
I have one more question. Your neigh, at the neighborhood meeting, did you, what kind of feedback did you get on that nine-foot fence? Because that, to me, seems like a Gulag.
Well, actually, the nine-foot fence was when we came out of the meeting. The neighbors wanted some visual barrier between their homes, especially those, those lots right there, and, and so we talked about a fence, and we're talking about a six-foot high fence, and their complaint was, well, that'll only be three feet high on their side. They, they wanted a six-foot, for them to see, to block that view. So that's how it got so tall.
Okay, so that answers my next question, just so I'm clear, that on their side, on the side that's currently there, they're, they're going to be sitting up three feet higher.
Yes, as I mentioned, there's, I think, three of the four lots already have like these, uh, concrete seg, so they'll come up, three, four feet. So, our, the idea is to put, is to put the, the fence at six feet... Their rear yard elevation.
Are there certainly fences along their backyards?
Um, not that I recall, I don't think so.
No.
Yeah, and, and that six feet would be, actually, a...
I know, that's awfully big.
That's a big fence.
It would be... Cut a lot of light.
Well, I have one more. I wasn't going to pass out this one, but I'll do it now, since the question came up.
Okay, so now we have exhibit...
Okay, I'll kind of explain this. The left-hand side of this page kind of shows what the view might look like, looking down the property line, with the retaining walls on those lots, on Silver Fox, to the farthest to the left, this, this fence, and then showing what vegetation would be, look like, perhaps, as an initial bit of planning. Then, a view looking at the fence, the next view to the right-hand side of the page, shows what the fence would look like, without any plannings in front of it, from the, from Leland Run Two side, or the attached home side. The top six feet will be cedar boards, which will be all that, those on the Silver Fox side, lots one through four of Silver Fox, that's all they will see, is they will see the, the six-by-one cedar boards, that'll be what they will see. Below that, and an elevation that matches up with their wall elevation height on their side, will be some pressure-treated boards, lowered down so you don't have a hole underneath this cedar boards, you know. We didn't like the idea of starting up here at nine feet, coming down six feet, and then having a gap from there to the ground. So, once you get below that elevation, there'll be pressure-treated boards down to the ground. And, but all of that view of those, that fence, well, I shouldn't say all of the fence, but a good portion of that fence, especially the lower portion, is going to be blocked on the attached unit side by vegetation that's required as that protected landscape area. So there'll be a mixture of shrubs and trees that will reduce the height of this wall, or this fence, from looking like so much like a wall. It'll look like a six-foot-high fence for those on the Silver Fox side, or, yeah, Silver Fox side, and it'll be a sphere of plannings. Walkway towards their rear property lines, and they've raised their rear guards to give them a more level. And, and as you enter this property, that property line continues to slope down towards what would be the private street.
Mr. Sisso, I'm looking at the direction of the light. I'm not schooled in this. Can you tell me, will this six-to-nine-foot fence cast a large shadow due to the sun orientation on most of the day, or not?
Um, I don't think so. You see, here's the north arrow on this plan, and so the rising sun is over here, it'll come around at, by noon or so, the, the sun will be on the Silver Fox side of the fence, casting the shadow towards the, the attached lots, but there will be vegetation there anyway, that will eventually be taller than that. So, there may be some small shadow by the morning sun, but by noon, it's going to be reversed.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
I have a suggestion. Could, could we make this a good neighbor fence, instead of just having it on one side, have the boards staggered? Like a good neighbor fence?
You know, I'm not a fence, fence expert either. I know the applicant wishes to use cedar fencing, and this will be, fencing will be part of the design review package as well. So, if such could be done, I guess it could be done that way.
Mr. Kavazan, Mr. Powell's raised a question, since nobody's really had a chance to see these either, should we just read them aloud and make them be, you know, part of the public record this evening, as opposed to just doing our own review of them?
You can certainly do that. There, you know, the, the question, it is new information, if somebody were to request an extension of time to rebut it, you can, you know, you'd be required to give it. If nobody does request such a thing, you wouldn't have to do it. If you want to make it available, you can certainly read it into the record, you, you know, there are a variety of different things you can do. Read it into the record is one way to get it, get it in there, make sure that the, the public is aware of what they are.
Okay, I'm getting nods from my planning commissioners, that they would prefer to read it into the record. I'd help if I put my microphone on, I don't really want to be here. Excuse me. Um, this is quite loud. Okay, so we have a revision, if I got this right, on twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, and the applicant has already said that he has agreed to these revised conditions. Uh, twenty-five, as prior to the issuance of a building permit for any of the housing units, the applicant shall have received city-approved landscaping buffering plan on lots eight through eighteen and twenty-three through twenty-five, as identified in exhibit A. The landscape buffering shall be installed prior to the issuance of the final occupancy permit. In addition to including for the preservation and replacement of the landscaping in the CCNRs, the applicant shall cause to be recorded a conservation and preservation document that protects the newly landscaped area. Said document shall specifically prohibit the removal of any of the landscaping unless such material has been found to be dead or diseased and in danger of dying, or presents a hazard to a property. If the landscaping is removed for any reason, the property owner shall replace the landscaping with similar materials from the Oregon City Native Plant and Tree List. Number twenty-six, the attached housing unit driveways on proposed lots fourteen and fifteen shall be a joint driveway, and the driveway shall be limited from the property line to the back of the planter strip to a maximum of twenty-four feet wide, thirty feet wide at the street till off of the taper. Attached housing unit driveways on proposed lots eight through thirteen shall be a joint driveway, and the driveway shall be limited to a maximum of twenty-four feet wide, thirty feet wide at the private street till off of the taper, or a minimum of eight feet from the edge of the private street pavement. Number twenty-seven, the garage wall of the attached units on proposed lots eight through thirteen shall be limited to forty percent of the length of the street-facing building facade, and shall incorporate a minimum three-foot-tall brickstone wall and windows across the width of the garage doors. Where the street-facing facade of the building is less than thirty feet long, the garage wall facing the street may be up to twelve feet long if there is one of the following. Interior living area above the garage, the living area must be set back no more than four feet from the street-facing garage wall, or a covered balcony above the garage that is at least the same length as the street-facing garage wall, at least six feet deep, and accessible from the interior living area of the dwelling unit. The attached units on lots fourteen and fifteen, and all the detached units, shall incorporate a minimum three-foot-tall brickstone wall, windows across the width of the garage door, and one of the following garage designs. A min, a maximum twelve-foot-wide single garage door, or two garage doors, each with a maximum width of eight feet with a one-foot-wide center post. And then the new condition, twenty-nine, the detached homes shall have a minimum living area of fourteen-hundred-and-ten square feet. Detached homes shall have a minimum living area of thirteen-hundred square feet. All exterior walls of all homes shall have horizontal siding and a minimum thirty-six-inch-high brickstone garage front. This requirement shall be included in the Leland Run Two CCNRs. And number thirty is an eight-to-nine-point foot, nine-point-five-foot fence shall be provided along the common property line with lots one through four of the Silver Fox subdivision, as depicted on exhibit A. This fence shall provide lots one through four of Silver Fox, six feet of fence above the elevation of the rear of the four Silver Fox homes that are adjacent to the proposed attached homes. Below the six-foot upper portion shall be a skirting to the elevation of the Leland Run Two lots. The fence shall be constructed upon completion of the subdivision and prior to the issuance of a building permit for the homes on lots eight through thirteen and fifteen. This requirement shall be included in the Leland Run Two CCNRs.
Thank you.
Okay, duly on the record?
I feel good about that.
Okay, good. Um, so at this point, if we have any public testimony, I think we'll be ready for that.
Anyone in favor? Neither for nor against, and against. We have Mr., Mr. Cool, one-nine-four-six... Mr. Huckler, one-nine-four-six-two, Silver Fox Parkway.
If I may, I have a question to ask to start this thing.
Okay, first we need your name and address for the record, even though it was just...
On the microphone.
Into the mic.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Huckler, one-nine-four-six-two, Silver Fox Parkway, lot three, as you're up here. Uh, I have a question. He placed, uh, there.
Hello?
The drawings that we got from the city, uh, in the mail, um, and these drawings don't seem to quite match, and I'm kind of confused. Um, this map shows that these detached lots are like a hundred-and-twenty-foot deep. Uh, this map, according to this, shows that the lots are approximately eighty or eighty-five foot deep. Uh, and if we've got a thirty-six-foot in the back of the house, and a thirty-eight-foot in front of the house for driveways, I don't understand why you did it on the house, in the garage. So, I'm kind of confused about that.
Okay, we'll try and get some clarification on what the lot sizes are.
Our concerns, and most of the people here are from the same area, is in that, uh, private street. Um, have you had a map here showing the parking? Yeah, okay. Um, if you've got, uh, two cars parked in, in these driveways, and you have cars parked along here, it's gonna be impossible to turn around. And as, as a couple of you people said, uh, there are a lot of children, which means awful lot of backing out down the street, uh, and a lot of congestion. And with children running back and forth to this play area, it seems like it's a rather dangerous area. Uh, there's, as far as I can see, there's no way to turn around a vehicle in this private street. And I'm sure that, that this parking, if not taken up by the homes, is gonna be taken up by, by people coming in to enjoy this, this player.
Okay, but normally, people can back into a driveway and go out a little bit.
Yeah.
Normally, that's what we do.
Yeah. Okay, but if you've got two cars parked in here, it's gonna be rather hard to pull into a driveway to back out. I mean, the, the residents will be able to do it, but I'm not sure about other people coming in, if you see what I mean.
It's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a very, very congested area in here, and that's our, a, a lot of our concern, is the, is the high congestion in this area with the attached homes. Where if they put single homes in here, there would be less traffic or less parked cars.
Well, if you're talking about people coming into the area and parking in the extra parking places from people outside the neighborhood, that's not gonna be solved by putting detached houses there, because you're still gonna be having people coming from outside the neighborhood.
But there won't be as many parked in here as there would with the, with the attached homes.
I, I disagree, because they're providing plenty of parking spaces, uh...
If you park two cars in this driveway, there's no place to pull in and turn around.
You still have, you still have the sidewalk and the sleeve of the driveway. You wouldn't be pulling all the way up into somebody's driveway.
Let me ask this then. Uh, you, sadly, you said that you have driven over in this area in the last week. Did you come in this way through Silver Fox?
I came in both ways.
Did you?
Mm-hmm.
Did you notice the congestion on, uh, in this area over here?
Uh, I honestly, I didn't. Not today. I didn't...
Late in the afternoon?
I came in this afternoon. Well, yeah, about four o'clock.
Usually in the evenings in this area in here, it's very congested with on-street parking, where the, uh, attached homes are, you know, on this street. And that's kind of what we're going by, as, as far as what we're gonna have over here. So, I'd like the council to kind of think about that.
Okay.
I have a question for you, sir. Um, what kind of totlot amenities will be, are proposed for the park that's going to be built close by? It seems like that would be a much bigger facility and more attractive for young families, as opposed to a, a small playground that's really part of this development.
I'm not sure that there, there's going to be, uh, a lot of play area for small children. They're talking about basketball courts, and they're talking about tennis courts, and, and that type of thing. But my understanding is that this is gonna have a play area for small children. Is that correct? So, that would be, this park area over here is gonna be, I think, for, for older families.
Actually, I, I do remember seeing that. There is going to be a totlot, or a smaller lot, with playground equipment at, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the park.
Wesley Lynn.
Wesley Lynn Park. Um, there is a portion of that that is defined for parents, uh, to be able to sit with their kids under a, supposedly under an overhang type thing. So, I believe there is some there, and, within walking distance.
Um, can I ask the, um, the testifier his opinion of the walking path behind, um, in between the pond and the, the walkway that's gonna connect with that street? Okay, thank you.
If I can clarify, the lot depths proposed by the applicant on the attached homes are between a hundred and, approximately a hundred-and-thirty-foot deep and a hundred-and-fifteen-foot deep. It's on exhibit, um, exhibit four, page, uh, the second page of the site plan.
And, yeah.
Uh, the, the application, in the, in the process of noticing folks and working with the applicant, and working with the neighbor, and working with staff, the proposal does change somewhat. The initial application that was mailed out showed more lots than are proposed right now. Um, we didn't feel that it was a significant enough change to renotice everyone, um, based on losing two lots.
Okay, who's our next citizen?
Uh, Ms. Cool. Miss, sorry.
Last time I checked, I wasn't there. My name is Willie Cool, and I'm from lot number three, same as Mr. Huckler. We talked about, uh, traffic there for the parking. Those cars are not always gonna be parked, they're moving. So that's why we were thinking that suggestions and the, the traffic would come in with the kids, and this is from a grandparent's point of view. When we bought the house in Silver Fox, we were told that the area right there was a wetland, and it could not be built on. What changed? I don't know. And now that we're living on lot number three in Silver Fox, now we're gonna have a two-story building behind us. What really upsets us, and this is my personal point of view, because we were lied to. Um, my question was answered about the fence. It was gonna be a cedar fence. What was, how, we put up a wall, a retaining wall, what do you pay three thousand dollars for? This is gonna be now budged up, I presume, with a cedar fence. Is that gonna be budged up to a property line, or is there gonna be a distance between that wall that we put up and the new fence that they're gonna put up? That was my question. And after the cedar fence is up, who's gonna take care of that? Who's gonna, if the builder is gonna put it up, who's gonna maintain that? And like I said, the, the property, our property and the new property we're already gonna build, to get off my property, I have to walk around because I can't jump off of there. So, are they gonna build this up, or how are they gonna fix that? And, um, could I have a copy of the reading that you just read? Is there a possibility that we can get a copy of that?
Sure, staff has extra copies.
You bet.
Okay, so this is some of my concern from the questions what I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else wishing to speak on this application?
A butthole from the applicant, if he wishes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm, I think Tony answered your, the question about the lot depth. Um, originally, these lots were gonna be a little deeper, uh, and then the, the private street widened to allow parking on one side, and that's how that difference came about. In regards to cars backing out, in the present... In the present, uh, private drive on Leland Run, the original, pre-Leland Run, that's a twenty-foot private drive, and that seems to be working well for those, those homes. I'm not aware that there's any parking issues with that private drive itself. The problems, as I understand, are out in the, the public street, Silver Parkway, where it starts to make the corner. Um, and I think part of that might be the fact that, uh, my understanding is there's cars parking on both sides of the street. Uh, it's a thirty-two-foot-wide curb-to-curb. If you have eight-foot-wide vehicles, that effectively reduces your traffic width to sixteen feet, which would be narrower than a single car parking on a twenty-eight-foot-wide street, as is proposed on this private drive. Um, such narrowness is, I guess, good for traffic calming, but it's not good for those who wish to pass in that area. Sixteen feet is narrow for two-lane traffic. Uh, I mean, there's county roads built to that standard in the past, not anymore, but, uh, sixteen-foot, uh, access would be narrow, uh, especially with cars on either side of that. Um, in regards to the fence location, the fence is proposed to be put on the rear of lots eight through thirteen, and on the side of lot fifteen, within those lots, uh, probably within a few inches of the actual property boundary. The maintenance of that fence, depending upon exactly how the, uh, Mr. Fleury does the CCNRs, and what might come out of the, uh, design review decision, would be, that could be maintained either by the individual property owners with whose, whose lot the fence falls on, or it could be maintained through the homeowners' association, or possibly even some other mechanism. Uh, but it won't be maintained by the city. It would not be maintained by those adjoining property owners in Silver Fox, uh, but, uh, that's, that's the concern. And I guess that's all I had.
All right, well, thank you very much. Do the twisters have any other, uh, questions or comments, uh, staff or, um, the applicant, before we close the public hearing?
I do. Tony, you mentioned in your presentation, your first presentation, that the parking issue on the corner there was really a code compliance issue, as opposed to a design issue?
Correct. That's my, uh, interpretation, understanding of what's going on out there, is that it's more of some individuals with multiple cars that have left them on the street for a multiple amount of time, which could get dealt with through code enforcement. That'd be my, my, my take on that.
Okay, and so, and I, I, I didn't notice that area, really, because I was really focused on getting around, but, so that private drive, uh, actually goes into attached housing?
Correct, off Silver Fox, yes, it does.
Okay, and that's, that's where your issue is there. You believe that you're going to see that same type of a problem on the backside.
If I could just point out, for the, for the Leland Run, which is where that private drive is, that's a twenty-foot accessway. There is no on-street parking provided there, um, which we believe is being alleviated through this, this development by providing that on-street parking.
That was my next question, is, was that allowed? And you answered it, so I appreciate that.
My concern isn't with that private drive.
Please, sir, please, sir, you need to step up to the microphone, please, so we can accurately depict everything that's being said tonight.
Thank you.
My concern is not with the little private drive there by the S-turn. It's further down towards the Silver Fox development. And the, the development I'm speaking of... And the, the development I'm speaking of is right in here. This seems to be where a lot of the congestion is.
Now, is, is that from people that are in the, in the, you know, in that housing where the, where the, the road goes, and then they just back up? It just goes along, they find a park, place to park?
There are, I don't know why, but right in, in this area, it seems like the driveways are full, there's parking on both sides of the road. It's difficult to get two cars by their passing each other.
Okay, well, I mean, you heard, you heard him say, I think if we can look, code compliance, I mean, that's, that's the first step.
And, you know, the code compliance of leaving a vehicle abandoned on the side of the road versus a public street, which is designed for parking on both sides of the street.
These are not abandoned cars, because during the day, they're gone. These are people living there, they're moving their cars daily.
Okay, Mr. Combiessman, we just need to clarify that we understand there's a neighborhood concern for parking problems that have no relationship to the application that we have here tonight.
You can-
There might be a better time or place to address the neighborhood issues?
It certainly can be addressed with the neighborhood rep and with the code enforcement officer, so there are other, there are avenues to, to deal with the congestion down in that area.
Well, I might, is that, that actually is not a rec, is that a recognized neighborhood association at this point?
I don't know.
Do you?
No, it's not.
Okay, I didn't think it was, so-
Okay, so, that avenue is not a-
That avenue is not open to it.
Right.
And, and I, I mean, I do understand the concern. I'm just, I'm trying to, in my mind, trying to figure out, you know, how, how it's going to, how, how this is going to be addressed, and I, and I think we've addressed it, and I, but I also see the problem, and I, I think that's, it's been brought up, I think it's something we have to fix.
I think the reason it was brought up, because that's the same area where the attached houses are at this moment. And of course, we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, this is all in the future, but we see a problem already there in the houses. It's only nine months old, because we have only lived in there for one year. And the last house in Silver Fox has just been finished, maybe a month ago. So, and already, it is a problem. So, we just see that with those houses so close together in a dead-end area, that it might become another problem. That's why it was brought up.
Oh, my question to you, ma'am, would be, how much parking capacity do those attached housings have? Do they have room for two cars in the parking, in the driveway, and then two-
Where the suggestion is-
The one that is causing you concern?
Okay, it's a real sharp S for.
Okay.
So, when they have cars on each side, you go from this side, all of a sudden, you go on, to the right, on the other side again, it's the way the road is formed.
My question's a little bit different. It seems like this developer is providing four parking spaces, off-street parking spaces per house, one in the garage, two in the driveway, and one in the side spot. That may be significantly more parking that's being provided in the car, in the housing that's causing you concern.
That's a possibility, but those cars are not always going to stand still, they're moving.
True.
You know, I mean, you're not going to take four cars and park them and not touch them again. And if they're one car behind the other, you know, there is going to be a lot of traffic there. Excuse me, I don't speak English all that well. But I'm just looking at it in a dead-end area, that it could be a lot of traffic, and especially with little kids. And this is just from a grandparent's point of view.
The applicant would be able to rebut if he would like, but I also like to point out that we've imposed restrictions on driveway widths to provide on-street parking. We've provided on-street parking on the private street. I feel we've, we've dealt with the parking situation on the subject site.
I have to say, in all fairness, that it does seem like this particular project has really been over backwards to try and accommodate and keep those cars off the street and have onsite parking on their properties. Along with Commissioner Mecklenburg's question, more than likely, there's not that much parking provided in the other location, and that's why there's a problem down there. So, if-
But what was, why can they build now if it was designated as a wetland? What changed? When did that change?
Uh, Mr.-
We bought the house a year ago, and they told us it was going to be a wetland, it was not going to be built on.
Could we first clarify a little bit of procedure here? Are we into, are we back into citizen comments, or are we into planning commission deliberations?
No, we have not closed the public hearing yet.
No, are we into planning commission deliberations or public?
No.
Okay, okay. Do you want to address that?
As far as the issue of a wetland on the site, we've, we've delineated where the intermittent stream is, where the wetland is, and where the pond is. Any information that someone has provided that wasn't approved by the city, we cannot speak to. As you can see, everything in green has, has been protected through open space or water resource protection. The whole site, that's why we're doing a planned unit development, is that there is a wetland on the site, and there is a pond on the site, and we're protecting those as per our city standards.
So, in that regard, we're stuck with it? There's nothing we can do about it? No matter what they've told us, we cannot do anything about it? Is that what the town said?
Ma'am, the city, the planning commission hasn't made its decision yet on, on what it is going to do. What I believe the planner's telling you is that the wetland, according to city maps, the lot behind you is not part of the designated wetland. You know, without knowing who it was who told you that was a wetland-
Silver Fox Parkway, the builders.
You know, you may, you may have a discussion that you might want to have with your builder, but as far as the city maps show, there're no, there is not a wetland, and there was not a wetland there.
So, how, how do we kind of find a right way about this? We're stuck with it, right? Is that basically what it is?
Ma'am, the city maps, which is, which are the criteria that the city has to make its decision on, do not show a wetland on that map, on that lot.
Okay, at this time, I think we're ready to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this application. At this point in time, the planning commissioners will deliberate about this application and the information that's been provided this evening, and make the decision. So, does anyone want to start out with any comments?
I will. Let's, I'll start with a couple. I've got a couple. One thing I, when I saw the, the design tonight of the additional driveway, the additional parking on the driveway, I was, I was a little concerned about that, and I'll tell you, because it, it always bothers me when, I mean, it's great to give enough people parking, but when you start adding on all these extras, you, you become, all of a sudden, utility trailer parking areas, and the front of the houses look terrible. That was my first feeling, and I, I was saying, I'm not interested in that. After hearing the neighbors' concerns, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm still not happy about that, because like I said, I think it could cause, it would get cars off the street, but on the other hand, it would, it would get cars in the park, in the front yards, and, and I, and I don't think that's appropriate for the neighborhood, especially with these, the houses that you're attempting to design. So, you know, I, I would, my, again, my initial feeling was I didn't, I didn't like it, but I'm, I'm a little less, I'm a little more concerned now because of the parking, potential parking issues. The, I, I really like the pedestrian connectivity that you've designed into this. That's something that I'm extremely pleased with. I like the, the ability, and this, this map, and the ability where you can see people can get through this area without crossing in through yards and get over to, through the parks and the amenities. I think it's a, you've done a good job in putting that together. Yeah, I like the idea of the woodchip trail. I have concerns about that, safety issues without lighting back there. I, I, I can see that as a real problem area for people running in the, jogging or whatever through there at night, you know, and especially if people have fences up, I think that could create a safety corridor issue, and we've had more of those than we care to talk about in this city. So, my feeling is, I, while I like the idea of it, I like your idea of keeping it open and available, but not having a formal trail in there. I, I also like the idea of protecting the stream and the pond, and I was hoping that, that we wouldn't have to move that pile that's next to the pond, because I think that will cause a, certainly create a buffer, and depending on how the houses are built around it, I think that could be a real positive thing. And then last, I was, the big concern I had, as I always do when you get attached houses, I heard some, I read some comments, and I've heard comments about how it tends to cheapen the neighborhood potentially. But I think you've done a good job in, in, in showing us that what you would like to have in there is, is, is going to really fall in well with what the neighborhood plan looks like. And from driving around today, I, I see that, I think that would fit in pretty well, pretty, pretty effectively. So, overall, I, I like what you've done. The only addition I would make is under, and I'm not sure if we even want to add this, but under recommend, condition of approval number 12, I'd just like to add raised concrete pedestrian crossing and lighting for that crossing, or we could put it as a separate, a separate condition, but it seemed to fit in there. So, those are, that's my issues and questions.
I would like to compliment the applicant in taking a difficult site and making the best of it. I'm supportive of Commissioner Powell's comments about the connectivity, the pathway, the variety of recreational experiences that you offer, from a tot lot to a passive recreation. I am, also share Commissioner Orson's concern about a cyclone fence. It's not very friendly, maybe there's some other design that you could consider that would be attractive, but still mitigate further nuisance and the liability. I disagree with several of my commission members on the woodchip trail. I think it's a very attractive amenity, provides accessibility, it provides a way for people to appreciate a native environment in a dense urbanizing area. I know that some of the neighbors behind those houses will feel like their privacy has been invaded. That's what fences are for, it's an open space, it's available for the residents of this planned unit development to enjoy, an open space, a common area. It should not be locked up just for the sole benefit of a few houses. That's my personal opinion, living in a neighborhood that has dealt with this issue as well. Let's see. I support Commissioner Powell's recommendation on the raised pedestrian walkway in a different color and with lighting, if that can be arranged. All in all, I'm, I'm supportive of this application, and I'm pleased that the applicant had a hearing with the neighbors and took their concerns into account and addressed them as much as possible.
Okay, I want to thank you for the full-size plans. They were wonderful, they really helped lay things out. Before I even read anything, I did a walkthrough of the site and kind of got an idea of what it looked like, very, very difficult area to work with. I was very concerned about the wetlands, the stream. Reading through your, your plans really answered a lot of my questions, and I think you've done a very good job with the site, you've really thought things through. I don't like the idea of the cyclone fence around the pond, I think it really needs to be more accessible. And I'm still kind of questioning about the little fishing thing that you want to put in there. Might be best just to have a bench for people to just view the pond and not get too close to it, might be a little bit safer. I also concur with the idea of having a raised walkway on the street, and I like the idea of the bulbouts. All in all, I'm very supportive of this. I, I went into this just thinking, this is going to be very, very difficult, I don't know how they're going to put this all together, but you've answered lots of questions, you've worked with the neighborhood associate, or you've worked with the neighbors, I think you've answered their concerns, I think you've really gone out of your way to try and do your best for this project, and I'm very much in favor of it.
I too, I, I pretty much agree with, with most of what everybody has said here. I think when I, in looking at what's proposed here, this is, you know, this, one of the final phases in this little area, in this little stitch of things that are already happening, happening around it, and then having a difficult site with the pond and the stream, and, and then also just how vehicular access has to happen from, from Morrissey and from, from Tim's. With all those, and then trying to make this work and get your density, I think you've done a great job. I like where things are positioned, I like where the attached housing actually occurs relative to the, the play area. I think it's, it's, I think it's a really good job, this is, this is a really good I also agree with, with Commissioner Mecklenburg that the path should go through, I think that that's just a great amenity, I think that's what it'll make, that'll be part of the, one of the elements that'll make this little area here special. I think it, it just gives it a lot of character for this, for this area. I also agree that the, the walkway that, that crosses, just across the, the way from the pond there, that it, that it should have a light and should have some differentiated, I, I think it should be almost a, almost a bomanite, a, a bomanite surface where the, where the, the concrete is actually scored in such a way that it, that it calls attention to itself. That's an important crossing right there. And I also really like the way you've incorporated the existing evergreen buffer with the new buffer on, on this property's side as well, so I think this is a very good job, very good job, and I support it.
Okay, well, all of our commissioners are in agreement this evening, which is very nice. Just to echo what's already been said, the applicant in this particular planned unit development has done an excellent job, and as far as I can tell, has gone above and beyond the call of duty to provide the intent of a planned unit development, provide amenities for the neighborhood, and I, he really deserves to be complimented for the effort and the extra expense that has gone into this project. And I also am in favor of it, it's a good project, and we can't have everything be 200% perfect, but this project really has gotten as close to that as a project basically can get, so thank you for that. So, is anyone ready to make a motion?
I would move, we're doing all three of these, aren't we? I would move to approve PD-0302, WR-0308, and VR-03-17 as written, with the addition of a item 12, adding a concrete pedestrian cross, crossing with lighting, raised pedestrian concrete crossing with lighting.
Chairman Carter, could I have, make a comment on that? What, I, I would suggest is that we make it, make it a traffic calming device to be determined by the public works director, because I, I don't want to get, start to get too specific about how we're going to design these things. I think the public works department, as well as their, I believe there's a traffic safety committee that's looking at tra, you know, traffic calming, so I don't want to start prescribing how, you know, how it's done.
Would staff see traffic calming in the same light as they would pedestrian crossing? Because they're different intents. And I see this as the issue being pedestrian crossing.
Okay, well, there are different ways on pedestrian crossings, such as curb bumpouts and those kind of things. I, I just don't want to preclude a lot of different options that, you know, might work better than raised concrete.
Perhaps we make a recommendation, as opposed to make it a condition.
Condition, such as, if I might suggest the wording, additional traffic calming and pedestrian amenities, such as a raised concrete pedestrian crossing between the bulbs, or other method be determined by public works director? Is that-
So moved.
Yep.
Thank you. Oh, and the, and the other, the changes and the additional conditions that were added tonight. tonight.
Exhibit D.
On exhibit D.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Please poll the commissioners.
Commissioner Orson.
Aye.
Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Lejua.
Aye.
Chair Pershing Carter.
Aye.
All three motions carry. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, well, we don't have anything else on our agenda for this evening. Mr. Drantlaw, do you have any news or information that you need to discuss this evening?
Yeah, just a few reminders. On Monday, September 29th, we've scheduled a joint work session with the planning commission and city commission at 5:30 here at City Hall to discuss the park place concept plan. This is a presentation by Kent Ziegler in some of the area that was recently brought into the UGB. Then on Thursday, October 23rd, we've just scheduled a joint planning commission, city commission work session on the comprehensive plan. This was at the request of the city commission to get your input. And then October 27th, which is a Monday, it's a regular planning commission hearing, will be our first public hearing on the comprehensive plan and code amendments.
Monday, October 27th. Okay, and then I just wanted to make a note for anyone who may be watching at home that we do have the Walmart appeal being heard by the city commission tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock at the Pioneer Community Center. The information, the newspaper this morning suggested that it would be a couple hours of, of, yeah, of applicant testimony and, and comments from the public after that, probably starting around 9 o'clock. So anyone who might want to come and testify, be prepared to stay late. It's a Tuesday night. This is a special meeting specifically by the city commission for the Walmart appeal. There's no other item on the agenda tomorrow, is that correct?
That's correct.
Commissioner Carter, has a second hearing been scheduled or is this the only one that's been scheduled?
So far, it's the only one that's been scheduled.
All righty, then, if there's no other news or information, those in favor of adjournments?
Aye.
Aye.